This is the Menden Select Board and we will call the meeting to order at 5:30. Thank you, PEG TV. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have some paperwork.
And a code of conduct. And I avow support discrimination on my behalf.
Yeah, no, we, I had it on my paperwork that it was on. Sorry, code of conduct. Carol, what was the last thing you said? Sarah, did you have anything to add? Is it okay if I refer them as A, B, C, and D? You'll add the Gates as E and F, the health insurance policies have changed.
Now, could I recommend that you do the Gates right after the Carving Studio bench project?
Sure.
And then health insurance can follow the budget.
Sure.
Is that okay with that?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the Gates added as letter B and the health insurance discussion added as letter D under business.
Second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Under administrative matters, the signing of orders, did you have a chance to look I'll make a motion to approve the check warrant for $243,894.29 and payroll for $10,129,048.
Second that.
All in favor? Aye. And the minutes from October 23rd. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 10:23, 23.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye. I have no announcements.
Anything for me?
Anything for you, Sarah, under announcements? No, okay. Okay, public comment, we've tried to keep everyone out of two-minute limit without using my phone. Is there any public comment? Brian Gates.
Brian Gates. I'd like to know if anybody's ever read the rules at all in this town or regulations that are supposed to be followed.
Zoning, are you referring to zoning regulations?
No, I'm talking about regulations, normal laws of procedure. Laws of procedure from the Vermont Lees and Cities and Towns. Have you ever read that booklet?
Sorry, just wanted to ask.
Have you ever read it? Either one of you ever read it?
I've read through this, yes.
Okay. Because there's a lot of things in there you guys ain't follow. No, it's the law. It's not whatever, it's the law. You're breaking the law. We asked for Jack to be removed a few meetings ago, do you remember that? My wife asking for Jack to be removed before hearing.
The county board of adjustment, we asked for his removal from the hearing.
Did you personally talk to Sarah and say you did not want to have a hearing, Pam?
In this email, it says that...
I'm asking them a question first.
Can I just say, the town administrator individually confirmed that no select board member wished to pursue the permanent removal of any member. Is that correct? Did you...
Did you talk to Sarah about that? Did you talk to Sarah about that?
Did you confirm that?
We talked to Sarah.
And you did say that you did not want to pursue the removal of Jack, correct? You did not want to pursue or have a hearing, correct? Correct, so?
Well, yeah, but I was under, I did not know the full rules on that and whether we should or not legally or how that can be.
Not knowing the rules is not an excuse for violating that.
We consulted our lawyer.
But it was up to you, though.
Yeah, it was up to you.
It was your decision whether to conduct a hearing or whether to have a removal.
It says we still should get a meeting.
A hearing.
A hearing, we're supposed to get a hearing. We asked for a hearing, it's not up to you, though. What, decide whether or not you want a hearing? We asked for a hearing.
There was perceived, there was a perceived conflict of interest and bias from the zoning board of adjustment chairs.
He violated my 14th Amendment rights by law during ex parte communication with the other appellants, asking him for advice and having the lawyer, having his lawyer contact each other. That's against the law. That's why we asked to have him removed, which you decided not to. Can you answer me why?
I told you, we consulted our lawyer.
No, it's right here and we'll show you the laws, so the lawyer ain't reading the laws either. You're making us read the rules and read things.
I am more than happy to go over everything.
No, you haven't been happy to go over anything.
Yes, I have.
No, we haven't. So let's go over the appeal itself. The appellate's never paid, which makes it invalid. By state law, it's invalid until payment's made, a law shall be made with the application.
According to the...
There should have never been an appeal. I should have never been notified, I've had three months I haven't been able to bill on an appeal that wasn't valid because no one paid the fee.
Under statute...
I've asked, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for a response.
It's the law, it's in the law.
I'm telling you that I have...
There's no "we're sorry, we made a mistake," none of that.
It's not...
Yeah, it is up to you.
We haven't made a mistake.
Yeah, I did. Whoever worked, alright, so I want to know, who accepts the application and who brought it forward without the money? Who brought it forward without the money?
I can't answer that.
Well, sorry. There's only...
I want to ask you right now, who scheduled the appeal?
Who scheduled the hearing?
Without the appellate's payment.
Sarah, are you hearing the question?
The zoning board of adjustment schedules their hearing.
No, they don't.
No, they don't. They have to have a complete application.
Before that.
Before that.
And it's not valid without payment. It's still a company. We'll show you the rules in a second.
It's in all your paperwork, I just handed you.
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to go through.
Well, how do you not go through?
This is public, this is public now, so we have you on the agenda. So let's do it under the agenda so we can get, we have others here to work with here, okay, guys?
This is a three-year thing.
Understood, understood. Let's take it under the agenda now that we have it on for the agenda, okay?
We'll have it on any time.
Agreed? Okay, so any other public comments?
Let's move on to business. The Carving Studio Bench Project is first, please.
My name is Olivia Bowden and I'm the Administrative Assistant at the Carving Studio and Sculpture Center in West Rockland, Vermont. And I'm just here to give you an overview of what the bench project is. So this is the 15th year of our stone bench project. It's a two-week-long workshop specifically designed for teens in the Rockland County area, so ages 13 to 19 can participate. And we have up to 10 students who participate each year and they apply through an application process, which includes a brief essay about why the project would be helpful to them. So it was begun, as I said, 15 years ago after a Peru exchange project that the Carving Studio did with a sculptor who was working in Peru. And that same person, Nora Valdez, has lived in the U.S. for many, many years and she wanted to continue that model here at the Carving Studio. So each year she heads the project and the students work with her to design and then carve a stone bench, which is installed in various local municipalities. So the most recent one last year was installed in Rockland Town at the Northwood Pool and the year previous to that was Wallingford. So it's a longstanding project, which, you know, brings a lot of community pride and support with the municipalities that receive the benches. And the kids learn a tremendous amount. Some of them come back year after year to participate, others are brand-new and don't need to have any artistic background or carving background, they learn as they go. So, yeah, that's the basic overview. I don't know if you have questions for me regarding anything that I've said or anything I haven't said.
I haven't. Anne Singh-Eiser also gave us a pretty good background and some ideas that you have. How about the, could you go over again, please, the financial responsibilities Menden might have?
Sure. So there isn't anything mandated, but most of the time the municipality that receives the bench makes a contribution. So the project is funded through donations and occasionally grants. The United Way often gives us a grant to help fund the project. So municipalities generally donate about $1,000 to the project, but that is at your discretion. As I said, it's not mandated. But the program is free to the students who participate, so it does have a cost associated with it. Obviously, we pay our instructor, there's a cost to, right, overhead cost, the bench materials, right, the stone itself has a cost, so all of that is underwritten through donations.
And I would just, Shelley Susina, I would just like to add that the Historical Society is more than willing to take on the finances of this.
My question was for Olivia is what's the number, the best number of 13- to 18-year-olds that would be required to actually construct the bench?
So it's up to 10.
And what's the minimum number?
Gosh, I think there was one year where there was maybe just four of them. So it varies, you know, from year to year, but they still manage to do that, you know, and Nora will help as needed to make sure that it gets finished in a timely fashion because they do only have the two weeks. It takes place the last week of June, the first week of July at our facility in West Rockland. And then the bench would be placed and dedicated at the location of the municipalities choosing at some later time.
What we were from the Historical Society were hoping is that we could find Menden teenagers from that age and provide the interest in doing this, so that would be constructed by Menden teenagers and then the Historical Society can better reflect what they have next to the kiosk because that's kind of our historical Carving Village and we heard these, we heard suggestions that there may be some that is already listed and I think I'm looking at the mother of one or other there and I simply said, I think the mother of another one right here. You would know better whether there's an interest in, it's a one of both, too, if the Carving Studio, if the students have the time, but two weeks counts off.
Yeah.
And would it, when, I'm sorry if you've already said this, when is that two weeks?
Yeah, so it's the last week of June. So it's June 24 to July 5th and it's not on weekends, so it's just Monday to Friday and it's nine to three each day. And then because the 4th usually falls in there, they do have a break on the 4th, they do not work on the 4th. So really, that amounts to nine days depending on when that holiday falls. It really is amazing to see, especially when some of them, most of them have no prior experience and they create their own design, they work together to collaborate with each other to figure out how they want it to look and how to accomplish that. And Nora tries very hard to guide them, but leave the space for them to figure out, you know, what they want to do and how they want to do that. So it's really a very special project and we're fortunate that we've had so much community support and we hope that we keep this going until all the towns in Vermont maybe have a stone bench.
At least Rockland County, for sure.
Anne had mentioned the subject matter may be geared towards the veterans, is that?
So with the Stone Bench Project, it is up to the children, the youth who participate, what they decide to create. So any kind of outside influence is not part of what the Stone Bench Project is about. If there was a desire for some sort of commissioned project, we certainly could try to facilitate that with Nora and maybe some other skilled artists, but the bench project itself is designed to let the people who are working on it come up with their design and recreate it together as a group and then create that, so.
Shelley Susina, again, as Jennifer and I and Mary had talked about this, our initial response or our initial thought was do something for the benches for men and a simple plaque or something like that would certainly suffice in the end, whatever the design is, you know, to just say, you know, to honor those good benches served in military combat. So how would we kind of add it in again, Historical Society, is it okay there?
And when do you need to hear, what's the date you would like to hear from us?
Yeah, so generally we start, you know, we start recruiting, you know, young people to participate in the spring, although we accept applications earlier. Some of them who have participated before are very anxious to send things in, to make sure they get in. But generally, you know, the earlier that we know which municipality it's going to, the better, then we can promote that, you can promote that. It's sort of a win-win that way. So if, you know, by the, by the beginning of the year at some point, I don't know if that's reasonable.
That's great, that's good.
Now, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I don't know if they can hear this early, but I'm wondering who owns the shift of the bench after it's being placed?
Yeah.
So we just need to know if it's the town's ownership or Historical Society or if it's actually the Carving Studios?
It is not the Carving Studios, so I guess that would depend upon who is the sponsor, whoever accepts the bench, whether that is the town or the Historical Society or both. I can't speak to that, but it is not the Carving Studios, so once it is created and placed, it is a gift to that municipality or organization.
Do we know who owns the kiosk, who owns the signage out there? Do we both kind of own the signage, the property of the town, but then?
Did you hear that, Sarah? Who owns?
Yeah, I have to look back at the minutes to see if we addressed that, but I believe that the signage is owned by the town of Menden, but certainly we look to the Historical Society to add all of their historical information on it.
Anything else regarding that?
I think we just kind of wait and see what rolls up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Actually, there are some application forms, I printed them.
Yeah, sure.
So I can bring those up for you. And this is emailable as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you put one over on Mrs. Pyle or I don't know where? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
I know. I'm glad you went.
I think this is a great idea.
Okay, in your business, B, we have Gates. Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
My husband and I were contacted by the zoning administrator's development amendment on September 7th regarding the permit issued to our property, stating that there has been an appeal to our permit by our neighbors and hearing hasn't been scheduled. I came to the Select Board on September 28th asking for the removal of Jack Henley, the chairperson of the zoning board of adjustment, due to his ex parte communications with all of the appellants, as well as the perceived bias pertaining to Brian Gates having restraining order from the town. Notwithstanding the fact that one of the appellants, Jeff Wells, was also a past select board member and chair and had also appointed three of the four zoning board of adjustment chairs. On October 5th, it was brought to our attention that the appellants did not submit a complete application with proper payment, therefore making the October 4th, 2023 hearing of the ZBA conducted invalid and unlawful. According to the Essentials of Land Use and Regulations in the State of Vermont, the zoning regulations of Menden, as well as the statute entitled 24 VSA 117 and statute 4440, the payment of which shall be a condition to the validity of the filing or act under this chapter, and that's on the first page that I showed you. We would like to know why the ZBA and Jack Henley believe they have jurisdiction to continue the appeal without payment. Our 14th Amendment rights have been violated by the town. We are seeking the removal of Jack Henley, Harvey Zarra, Therese Corazonz from the ZBA. We are seeking the immediate removal of Ms. Elizabeth Swett from the planning commission and are accusing her of orchestrating the appeals of our neighbors and writing them herself. Whoever is responsible for filing the applications of appeals from our neighbors as complete to the zoning board of adjustment should be removed from office.
Fine.
The hearing conducted by the town was unlawful and allowed all of my surrounding neighbors, including Ms. Swett, to continue to harass and discriminate against my husband and our property. It was evident at the hearing that it was not the construction that was in question, but what my husband and I do for a living, which is absolutely legal and legitimate and registered in good standing with the State of Vermont and the State Department of Taxes in Vermont. The diversity, equity, and inclusion policy in place in the town amendment claims to condemn racism and discrimination in all of its forms and commits to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. The town of Menden has and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinion. This is my opinion. In 2020, my neighbors came to the Select Board looking to stop any development on the empty lot on Terror Lane that we own. I believe there was defamation by my neighbors without outright lies being told, Val.
Val, you were there, you heard it all.
No, we have to see the video.
Nine hours of executive session for personnel, personnel, but there was no personnel, it was personnel.
It was personnel.
We still ask what it was about, but you're not telling us. Why were we talking about somebody for nine and a half hours?
All right, when we had to see the videos of these meetings that were done very open, we were denied.
We were denied access to them, which we were supposed to have them.
Under FOIA, under Freedom of Information Act.
Mission Act.
The Select Board and members of the ZBA are contributing to the continuation of the harassment and discrimination by residents and property owners in the town amendment towards Mr. Brian Gates and his property.
Like the sheriff being at every freaking meeting that we go to? Why isn't he here tonight? Because we finally called. Hey, because he said it's just about me. We have somebody that isn't here that doesn't work yet and she, hey, Sarah, did you have anything to do with that appeal?
Focus on...
I'm interested, she's here, I can ask her. She's probably...
And this is my last statement and this is my opinion. My neighbors suck and they can kiss my ass and so can Jack Henley. This letter is, in addition to all that, you can see the statute 4440.
Those are laws.
Those are laws.
Those are laws that you wrote.
The town shall follow.
I can hear you.
Well, obviously you can't because you're not even still reading it. You haven't addressed it at all.
I'm listening, you want me to read it while you're...
Hey, we already told, we already asked you two months ago to remove Jack after he violated our rights and broke the law. You decided not to, which actually, why don't you read 107, our line?
I'll read it when I get home.
Okay, 107, you read 107.
I want you to read.
That means that you are held liable. If you held a lawful meeting, you would have been all the good, but when you held unlawful meetings and discriminated against me.
What unlawful?
You're going to be held...
Without payment.
Without payment. You can't hold an appeal hearing without payment. Do you understand that now? What don't you understand about that? It's in our...
Don't talk to me like that.
I will.
I'm not, I will not listen to you when you're screaming at me, do you understand that?
Do you understand, Val, how much money this has cost us? Do you have any idea? It's snowing out right now, Val, you almost crashed on your way here. Do you know it's snowing out and we can't construct our fucking building?
Over the... It didn't build a deal. It didn't build a deal.
Three months, it's cost us $30,000. It's real money, Val, it's not... It's not, ooh, you're mean, you call me a sadist. I'm so sad.
Well, you told us about how you were called the mean girl when you were growing up. What do you mean?
I was never called mean. I don't...
Oh, no, you said the other girls were meaner than you.
Okay, you know what? I've figured out.
Let's get back, let's get back to the, to the, to the...
Now, get back to the law. Now, get back to the law.
Right now.
We just need to address that, though.
Yeah, we need to address the law. It's right there and writing.
Stop.
I want you to read.
It's right there and writing.
Write it. I want them to read it the full.
I want...
But you won't read it.
I want them to read it out loud in public.
Read it.
You can read it.
You read it.
You read it. Don't tell me what to do. You guys are so...
I want you to read it for me.
You're screaming. Yes, thank you.
We are going to see it. Don't worry.
Statue 4440.
You can sit down.
Administered by it.
She has a lawyer. Sit down.
The legislative body may set reasonable fees for filing of notices of appeal and other acts.
Oh, that's...
And you did. The Selectment Amendment shall establish such fees as may be necessary for the filing of applications. Here is the fee schedule.
You see that?
So, can I...
That's from the town, but it's also from the state.
Can I ask?
It's all rules, the town.
Can I ask a question? Were the fees paid?
No, they were not.
Sarah?
What's that, Sarah?
Sarah, where the... Can I, can I just...
Now, I would like to enter the meeting and...
Nope.
Now, answer the question.
Answer the question.
Answer the question, Sarah.
Publicly.
Publicly. We already know they didn't pay.
I want you to publicly state it.
And didn't you, Sarah, move that along forward?
We can hear you. You don't...
Well, I'll see if she can hear.
She can hear.
Sarah, didn't you move that along to the ZBA?
Without payment.
Without payment? I don't have anything to do with the ZBA. The town administrator doesn't have anything to do with the ZBA.
Who sent the appeal to the ZBA?
I have no idea.
I'm asking.
Not behind you. I do not know.
That person should be fired immediately. Immediately. It's cost me like $30,000. I haven't been able to build it almost three months now. It's crazy, over nothing. Over, I shouldn't have never, I should have never even been told about it because it was not an appeal. And you've subjected me to hearings, I thought, discrimination, talking about our occupation...
In my business.
We asked you to step in. To Jack, we told you to remove Jack. We told you there was, we told you there was this shit hanging going on, but obviously, you didn't care. You went right along with it.
Don't tell me I don't care.
What are you talking about?
In order for this to be, let's, let's address the situation I hand here. We're... Okay, so...
I'm waiting for answers.
You're still waiting?
I have emails.
How can you, it's right there in the law.
I can...
The questions that you have.
Those ain't questions. That's the law right there.
What you guys are supposed to follow.
Were the fees paid?
No, they were not. Ask Sarah. She's not going to answer because they're not paid.
She doesn't want to see the public...
I'm sorry, I would like an answer. Were the fees paid? Were the fees in order to do the, the appeal, period, were they paid to begin with?
No. I don't know who you're asking.
I'm asking whoever has the answer. I don't have the answer.
Hold on. We already got an email saying that there were no payments made from Nancy.
And Jack is trying to continue the, continue the deliberative...
He said, he said in his letter that he didn't, he didn't require a payment, but the law says it does require payment.
And the zoning regulations on the first page...
He also doesn't have the right to come on my property and order a site visit. That's not in his court text.
My basic, my basic question is right down to the base here.
Yeah, exactly.
Were the fees paid to do the, to do the appeal? That's all I want to know.
Yeah, but I would like to carry on with the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
We're not getting anywhere.
So, are we, can we...
I have questions.
Where, where we go with addressing this?
The fees were not paid. We're, we're all, we're all...
I don't know.
We're telling you they weren't paid. Ask Sarah.
We're telling you that they weren't paid.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sarah's not, Sarah's not...
She's trying to speak.
She doesn't want to say that they weren't paid.
She's trying to speak.
Because you're going to be held liable.
She can't, we...
The town is all individuals liable personally for doing it.
Personally.
You know that, right? Read 107. Read 107, Val.
107.
Read 107.
So...
I will.
Obviously, you don't care, because you don't, read it, Val.
Don't tell me I don't care.
Read it. Read it. Obviously, you don't. It's not really a concern of yours, just like the shit flowing on my property or the water flowing on my property from my neighbor. It's really not a concern of yours, is it? Because it's been going on for three years now.
I want Sarah to state publicly that the appellants never paid for the, with the application. The payment shall be accompanied...
It says it right there.
...in the application.
It's all...
Guys, we're going to move on with the rest of the meeting.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Gates, in my position as town administrator, I have nothing to do with the zoning board adjustment. I know, I do not take in their applications, I do not warn their meetings, and I do not take any payments for the town amendment.
You will recall the sheriff when you want to hear against me, right? Sarah, do you have a problem with me, Sarah?
Okay, we're moving on.
First of all, now it's my turn, because I'm on the agenda today.
No, you're finished. And I'm going to try and find answers. We, Lisa and I, are actually trying to find answers. You're screaming at me.
Hey, this is right there.
I, I'm talking now. I'm talking.
Can you not read? Oh, I forgot, you don't want to read.
I'm talking.
No, I'm talking.
Why don't you get out?
I'm not.
Then zip your lips, okay? You're sitting there flipping me off. You're acting like a total you-know-what, and we are working on...
Because you people have been you-know-what from day one.
Zip!
You've been here the whole time.
Zip him out. It's my turn. It's my turn. We're not getting anywhere.
Of course we're not, because you don't want to admit anything, Sarah. Sarah, I mean, Val...
Nobody wants to help.
Nobody wants to admit anything.
It's not true.
What do you mean it's not true?
I want to resolve things, but...
Well, then, you need to...
We don't know what to do.
So, I can build tomorrow.
We actually are trying.
Want to start construction again?
I, I can hear you without screaming. I get it.
Okay, do you get it? Do you get $30,000? Do you get the $30,000?
Do you get that I want to complete this meeting, okay? And we're finished.
Oh, I gotta go home and have dinner or something?
No, I already gave thanks.
I'm sending a bill to the town. Each week that we have been stayed on our permit is $5,000. The state...
My contract is charging me not to be there. They've now charged me extra to come back. You know how it goes, right?
I do.
Yes, you do, right?
So, why are you doing this to me?
I'm not. I'm trying to resolve this.
Well, then, why can't we resolve it right now? It's a law. It's a law.
I need answers to get it resolved.
That's the answer right there. It's right there.
And we want to be, we want to be here. When we're discussing it with a lawyer, we want to be present. We are requesting you be present during anything that involves a property...
I think the ones we need to speak with is the ZBA here.
What are you talking about? We have a letter from him saying, oh, he doesn't have to, they don't have to get payment. They didn't see it in 103.
We are not resolving it.
Because you know why? Because he didn't read 10, the first frigging page on 101, like none of them did. They had a little extra meeting here and didn't look at the rules. How can I not be pissed off?
Why don't you get a drink of water? You sound a little hoarse.
I don't need a drink of water. Would you like one?
No, I got one, thanks. Okay, we're done right now. We are trying. We are trying.
Well, this is almost like, oh, we're going to violate my neighbor for the driveway. We're going to fix that.
Do you know that, do you know that he threw, do you know that he threw a piece of block at my dog?
No, it's not...
Okay, we're moving on to the budget. Letter C.
They suck. Fuck them, too.
Okay, thank you.
You are the meanest girl I have ever met in my life.
Don't forget to pack it.
Oh, yeah, I will. Believe me.
I will look into it.
You said the same thing seven months ago.
We're moving on.
About the shit going on my property.
We're moving on to the budget.
From our property. Right? Didn't you say you were going to do something, did you? No, we haven't done a fucking bit.
No, no setbacks. They can shit all over our property, they can throw rocks at our...
Come on. Do their driveway over here. Can you get the town to clean up Towne Lane?
We're moving on.
Fifteen feet of crap.
We're moving on.
In the road again. And I'm not cleaning up the freeway again. You said you were going to violate them. This was three months ago. They still haven't been violated. But if an appeal comes...
Budget!
Then next day, you're going to fucking violate me, right? Fucking bullshit.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the budget.
Okay. Let me handle it next time, okay?
If we're here for no, for no resolve of anything ever, I'm just very confused at what we're here for. I understand their feelings. I can relate to them. I am a contractor. It is costing them that. Is it fair? Did the fees get paid?
Can we move on to the budget? I don't know, and I've asked the question.
How long is it going to take us to find out?
Have you asked anybody?
Yes.
Who'd you ask?
I've been told, I've been told that there is no fees, but the fees were not paid. That's all. That's all I've been, I don't know who gets that.
It's a joke.
Yeah. Okay, you have the budget in front of you. As we start the budget process, Nancy has given you the budget recommendations. That's on the large ledger side, piece of paper inside you. She's gone down, and major recommendations as part of the administration budget. I don't know if you want to go line by line at this point, or you're just going to reach through her recommendations. She's presenting an increase of income by $15,700 and expenses to be increased by $11,516.
I'm also here if you have any questions about that paper I've written on you. Thanks, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy. I'll read down through this, Val.
I'm reading to myself.
So, yeah.
I haven't had a chance to look at this.
I'm just looking at what Nancy has proposed. There's literally no questions. She's given you an explanation on why she's recommending things be increased or decreased, and it's not, there's no new, there's no new ventures or programs here. So, once we fold, I'm just going to fold these into the first draft of the budget. Unless you have questions about this specifically, I guess.
And I just wanted to add, and one of the, one of the biggest increases that we have is the increase in computers and computer services. We really have to start increasing that line item because we need, we need somebody to help us make sure that we've got all of our programs and we're working well with cybersecurity. I know that you all know that we just had a possibility of, you know, some mishap, which obviously was averted, but we need to get someone in place and it costs money to do that, to make sure that we're running the appropriate program, the appropriate software, and so on.
And this amount is sufficient, you think, Nancy? This increase?
I don't know that, but if it's starting point...
Yeah.
I mean, my guess is that the next few years, we'll probably have to, you know, increase it more in subsequent years, but this will, this will, it will give us something, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I try, when I'm, when I'm making my budget suggestions, I try not to increase my expenses by more than the income that I see, if possible.
Well, you're allowed to increase too, Nancy.
Alongside the money.
I said you're allowed to get increased too.
Thank you.
Let's see.
Alongside the money, there are still cybersecurity grants available, but the application actually was just published for the upcoming cycle, so if there's anything that we can reach out and apply for that grant funding again, we should take a look at that.
Okay, Sarah, is that something that you would be doing, filling out or applying for? Is that something that Nancy should be doing or we should be doing?
No, we, we applied for this fund, and then I, I requested information for backup, but with looking at the new equipment replacement schedule for computers, we should be looking to see if there's anything that we can apply for, replacing the computers or the software, printers or copiers in order to increase cybersecurity.
Yep, absolutely.
That's, that applies to homeland security and cybersecurity. So, if there's anything with computers that we can implement, we could apply for those funds.
Did you get my email on Nancy the other day about maybe computers are highlighted in the environment?
Right.
Yeah.
Now, that goes down. Were we just always keeping an...
No, it doesn't. Yeah, I, I would not recommend that we actually lower Robinwood roads. We do pay Killington $4,000 to, to maintain the winter, or do a winter operation on it. We have a built-in of another $1,000 in case it needs to be graded, and that, it's a dirt road, so that needs to be graded within that.
Okay. They have now paved that on Old Coach, correct? It's paved up to, uh...
I'm sorry?
Old Coach is now paved up to Round Robin, I believe?
Well, that's the Killington, so...
Right.
I'm not a real Killington road.
Okay.
So, we, we just have a little portion of Mary Maple Drive, Overbrook Drive, and, and Round Robin.
Uh-huh.
In the middle.
Uh-huh.
That we maintain, just the last loop of it.
When was the last time we graded that?
I, I mean, I'd have to check with Phil, but is grading...
I just wondered, if it's a thousand each year, I, I just wondered, have we utilized that?
It's not necessarily a thousand each year. That is just planned for the maintenance of it. It's sometimes easier for Killington to grade it while they're grading their own roads, and then we would pay them for that, so that we didn't have to break carburetor.
Okay, so you're, so you're saying pay for the grading for, for Killington? Okay, I got you.
Well, that is the reason why it was what you did for $5,000.
Sarah, is this something we can do line by line at home and then just, if we have any questions?
Yeah, this is the start of the budget process. So if we have any questions regarding what Nancy has presented, we can ask her for additional information in the meeting. And in the meantime, I'll incorporate the changes that she suggested. And we'll look at it in draft number two.
Thank you.
Okay.
Some areas that you might have highlighted going into the other areas of the budget. We will need to increase winter and summer salaries for roads based on the going rate of hiring its new employees. The line item of the library has been brought up. And I wanted to know, or how you wanted to address that? Do you want me to invite the Ruttland Street Library? Or do you want to set up a separate meeting window for representatives of the select board to talk to them about the funding of the library?
I think a personal meeting would be nice.
So Val, I can set that up with you and the library. With the visiting representatives on their board to attend that as well.
Okay.
Just to recap, whatever we increase the Ruttland City Elderman approved for their portion of funding to the library is then determined what they expect from the other participating families.
Right. Yeah, I would just like to learn. I do remember the process. I just would like to have a conversation. Break it down.
So the other... Other highlighted budget next area was the Barstow Youth Club. Traditionally, Linden and Chittenden have funded the Barstow Youth Club at $3,000 from each town. And last year, they eliminated at least 25% of their program by not offering baseball and putting it through the Rutland County Linn. So there could be a question of what they're spending their funds on if they still need $3,000. So Val, would you also like to set up a meeting with the Barstow Youth Club to go over that with them?
Sure.
So still continuing with the infrastructure budget. So the Vermont Eustace City has submitted a request to increase their funding from $26,12 to $26,93. A reminder that Rutland County tax, you don't usually see those numbers until the end of the year or at the beginning of January. Looking at infrastructure, the Town Office Fund will be paying the remaining principal payment on the Town Office Fund, and there's no interest this year. And then we will no longer be making payments on the Town Office. The Town Garage Fund, interest went down to $37,97. We received a request, we're going into public speaking now. Well, let's just... Do you have any questions about infrastructure? Do you have anything that you want me to look at specifically for the infrastructure budget? Okay, so then I'll just continue with the public facing budget. We received a request to increase the contract with the Rutland County share by 10%. Then we made our contract from $8,537 to $88,591. And we received an increase from the Rutland Regional Ambulance. This is the first increase they have sent us in decades. But they're requesting an increase from $4236 to $4586. And I have not received any other budget information from any of the department heads besides Nancy.
I'll go over that at home slowly and contact you and Nancy if I have any questions.
Yeah, please review this budget in detail. And if there are any areas that you want me to research, we would want to highlight them between now and the next meeting so that we can do that research for you.
Moving on to health insurance, letter D in the business.
Okay, so we do need to set the funding levels for the health insurance for 2024. If we stay with the current funding plan, the town pays 92.75% of the premium and the employees contribute 7.25%. We typically give the employees the option to purchase the plans that suit their needs while contributing to an HSA if they choose. They can buy up to produce the platinum plans or they can elect to choose a different plan and fund, dump funds into the HSA. Overall...
And it is currently with MVP because MVP is less expensive than Blue Cross, just so you know.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna go over. Is the maintenance is increased by 15% for Blue Cross Blue Shield and 12% for MVP. But MVP is still 3.5% less than Blue Cross Blue Shield. So the recommended funding levels. We do see... We do see health insurance increasing this year based on two factors. One, the percent increase from the work as well as the makeup of the employees, which plans we believe that they're going to be eligible for. So it's estimated that the funding would increase from over 2000... In 2023, we budgeted $107,402. Well, that was the cost based on the 2023 calendar year. That wasn't our budgeted amount with that. Because that is on fiscal year and health insurance is on calendar year. So the calendar year of 2023, we funded $107,402. And it's estimated for this year, knowing that new employees will not be eligible for insurance for a few months within a year. Or, you know, there's a 98 week period from when they are hired. The total would be $123,647.
So where does the $15,000 additional for 2024 come from?
The additional from the 107 to the 123.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will see that in 2023, we were funding a one-two-person plan, two-family plans, and three employees took the buyout. It is anticipated that for 2024, we'll have one-two-person plan, four-family plan, and one buyout. And that number of the 123 does include a $17,000 reduction based on employees not being eligible for health insurance during their probationary period.
Thank you.
Sarah, can you send me that spreadsheet tomorrow?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're staying with MVP, right? I mean, what exactly... I'm sorry, what exactly?
Yeah, so the recommendation is to base the funding levels at MVP rates.
Right.
As they are the lower of the two. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. What exactly are you asking us to decide tonight?
So on the first page where it says 2024 funding level, I'm asking you to approve this amount.
Okay.
This does not change the formula based on last year's funding to this year's funding. But they fully deal with the deadline of, I believe, December 1st to complete their paperwork in order to declare which plan that they're gonna save for 2024.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve the 123,674? Is that correct?
If you could make a motion to set the funding levels at those certain amounts for singles, two-person. Because what could change with the 123 is if one of our anticipated employees chooses a different plan. So we just want to set the funding levels and the buyouts at those different levels and remember that the buyout is 40% of the total cost. Okay.
So I make a...
So you can just move to accept the 2024 funding levels. And then I'll just put that table in the minute.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like.
I will move to accept the 2024 funding levels with the choice of a buyout.
Second nod.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to letter E, the U.S. Route 4 speed limit and safety. We are putting a letter together to request a speed reduction in hopes that Killington will... Where we border Killington will also accept our request. And that is in the making. Anything else, Sarah?
Well, we are... We've been invited to a 1-1 meeting in Rutland Town to discuss the speed on Route 4 and potentially collaborate with our area towns to request that speed limit on the road.
And that is, I believe, on the 21st.
And discuss the overall speed on the road as well. And that was, yeah, from the 21st. So Val, I think you had intended to attend that meeting. So we should just make a motion for you to represent the town amendment at that meeting.
Should I make that motion or should Seth make that motion?
Seth, you could make that motion if you agree with it, Seth.
Okay. All right, we'll make the motion to have Val represent the town amendment at the next meeting. Where is that at Rutland? Is that at Town of Rutland?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, that's good. November 21st at Rutland Town.
Okay. I will make a motion to have Val represent the town amendment on November 21st at Town of Rutland. Second nod, I guess.
Wow, second nod.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Is that at 6 o'clock, Sarah? I just don't have it in front of me.
I don't know what time they have it scheduled on the agenda. We'll follow up with that.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to letter F, highway stat.
So where is the final decision of hiring both seasonal employees for this effort and permanent employees? They are undertaking the preemptive requirements right now. And we expect to have them on board by November 27th.
Are there any questions, any further comments before we adjourn the meeting? I'll leave the carving studio applications here. And we'll just make some copies. Adjourn the meeting at 6:37.